I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the meeting of the South Burlington School Board. And I'd like to, oh, I guess you have to start the meeting, David.
That's right. So we've called the meeting to order, and the first order of business is the election of a chairperson. I would entertain a motion for the election of the chairperson.
I'll move that Elizabeth Fitzgerald be the chairperson of the school board.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any discussion? No discussion?
She's been great for the last three years, and will be great for another three.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's good to be back. All right, I will-
I'm so on vacation.
It was about a minute. I will entertain a motion for the election of clerk.
I will move that Martin Malone continue service as clerk of the board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Martin. And I will also entertain a motion to designate a school board member to sign contracts on behalf of the board.
I will move that Julie Beatty be designated as a school board member to sign contracts on behalf of the board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Julie. All right. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Five, a summary of election results.
Yes, and I brought some of that information for you. So, yes, congratulations for the passage of the budget, although we know not by much, so our work has always cut out for us. Coming around is some of what we handed out last night, or sent to you last night. I may have a few extra copies, folks, too. And I also, through the Vermont School Boards Association, Vermont Superintendent's Association, I have the budgets also kind of recapping in Vermont. One extra here, Stuart. So, the first one I handed out was just, again, a recap of the number of folks in the reporting districts and how that came out for us. Again, 22 percent of our folks participating, and not to flood you with paper, but this is what we did last year. I anticipated some of you might want to know how we did last year. This was much more comprehensive than last time, but there was more activity going on. So, pretty close to what happened last year around the percentages. Again, I didn't go through, I didn't go through it specifically, but again, there's some trend data here I think that's important. Last year, we worked hard to get out, to reconnect with each of our districts, and Martin, as you remember, did some work in that regard, and we worked with Ray, and so I will be updating that information to see how that plots ourselves along. And so, the long sheet, remember, was last year voting results by district. And so, again, I just wanted to provide you with that. I don't need to overtalk it.
Yeah, I think just a couple of quick comments. The voter turnout was a little less than 23 percent, and that compares last year. We were fewer by about 500 votes this, the election yesterday. So, we still have a challenge to kind of access our approximately, close to 12,000 voters within South Burlington. So, we are challenged to really get people to come to the polls for other than a national election, and I guess I would make, I would want to ensure that the board is continuing to have some dialogue around how to engage our voting community in participating. I also think, last year, the school budget, I think, passed by about 100 votes. Is that accurate?
Hundred and thirty-three, yes.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Hundred and thirty-three.
And this year, it passed by about 218. I think in, you know, in no case is that a rousing endorsement for the budget, but I think it does reflect the community's both ongoing interest in supporting public education, but also a signal over the past couple of years that the, that there isn't a significant majority of the community, or voting community, that is passing the budget, and I think it's going to continue to challenge the board, both in concert locally, but with the state as well, to really examine school spending. And I think some of the actions this board has been taking, becoming active in the legislature will hopefully lead towards some results there. So, those are a couple of my observations. I don't know if other board members wanted to comment. We do, we're very grateful to the community that passed the budget, and we'll work hard to earn your trust going forward and continue the great programming we have in South Burlington.
And then, that one sheet, it was just the 20, currently, the 20 schools that did not pass. But again, overall, 266 budget, 226 passed this town meeting, 20 did not, and 20 are going to be voted on later. So, again, just kind of following that. Great.
All right, we'll move on to any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to any amendments to the agenda data.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, could I just take a minute? I'd like to introduce our newest board member, Patrick Leduke. Do you want to share a few comments on your background, Patrick, for those who maybe haven't met you?
Sure. Sure. I'm Patrick Leduke. I live over on Woodbine Street, which is in Mayfair, Pomeroy, Fullerton Road. I have a daughter who's a senior in South Burlington High School, and a daughter who's an eighth grader in the middle school. Been in South Burlington for all of my adult life, really, with my children and family, so happy to be a part of the board, and proud of the work the board has done to date, and happy that you're all here to visit with us.
Thank you, and welcome. It's a pleasure to have you on board.
Thanks.
So amendments?
Amendments, yes, sorry.
So, what I'd like to propose, that we move item number 12 up to just after our end celebration, our students this evening, and we'll take off number 11, ends monitoring progress update. We'll put that on the next one.
Okay.
And that is it. That's it. Your amendments.
All right. So with that, we'll move to Agenda Item Eight, end celebration.
Yes. So, again, we're here at Orchard School, and we're happy to have some students with us, but what I'd like to do, board, is just first introduce Mark Trufilio, the principal, and give him the opportunity to introduce some of our guests, visitors, for this evening. Mark.
Thank you. This is great to have an end celebration here at Orchard tonight, so it's great to be here at Orchard. When I was asked to have an end celebration here for this night, it took me about three minutes to think and go right to Donna. Donna Sullivan-McDonald is our librarian and tech advisor here, and she has an awesome presentation for us. We have four great kids here. We have Senna and Rama, Nora and Patrick are here with us. Some of them are aspiring to be my boss, just to give you that.
That's good.
So, Donna, let's find you a few things about Donna before I turn and go over to her. And Donna, can you correct me on some of these? I just wrote these off from top ahead. How long have you been a teacher here?
I think I started as a librarian in '96, but I was the assistant, Nancy Hunt's assistant for four years before that.
And also SB resident.
A what?
SB resident also.
Oh, yes, I'm a South Burlington resident, and proud to be.
Also president of SD, right?
I'm president of the International Society for Technology and Education's Librarians' Network, which has over, well, SD itself has over 20,000 members, but my group has about two, a little over 2,000 around the world.
Yes. Also, she's an award recipient, award recipient for being recognized as one of Vermont's transformative and innovative educators for Project Ignite, nominee for Edublog Award, right, back in December, leader of Dynamic Landscapes, two-day conference here in Burlington, board member for the Vermont School Librarians Association. How am I doing here?
I'm embarrassed.
I'm not done. Presented at the Digital Age Library Playground in Atlanta last June.
Actually ran the playground.
Thank you. Write the current monthly article for, what was that?
I write for a school library journal.
An Hour of Code recipient award, in which we won a $10,000 award here at Orchard School, only school in the state. South Burlington Outstanding Teacher in 2010, a big shot on Pinterest, right? Also the Tarrant Institute, I couldn't even think of that word, the Tarrant Institute for Innovative Education called her a rock star librarian, and finally, you should follow her on Twitter. Did I get it all? Pretty close.
Over the top.
Anyway, we have a lot of ends here that are all going to combine together.
Oh, you'll see it. You'll see it. Now, I'd like my students, while I'm getting things started, I'd like my students to introduce themselves and tell you which grade they're in.
My name is Nora Clear, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Rama Alameen, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Patrick Clear, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Anna Alameen, and I'm in fourth grade.
And I am just waiting patiently for everything to start up for me, which I might have. There we go. Okay, to start with, you know that, you've heard that we were Code.org's $10,000 recipient for coding with every class at Orchard School, so we're pretty proud of that. There were, I think there were like 77 Vermont schools that did code with every single class, and they picked Orchard, which is so lovely. So, one of the things that we did purchase with the $10,000 is a MakerBot Replicator 5, and we have a little gift for the school board members that was printed, that was printed on our, on our 3D printer at Orchard, at Orchard School, so we printed some apples for you. The fifth graders will be using Tinkercad to design their own, whatever they're going to come up with, I'm not sure what it's going to be, but we'll start with Tinkercad next week. So, tonight, we're going to be talking to you about how we connect students globally throughout the year. So, using Twitter, there's our Twitter handle, we have an Orchard BT Twitter handle, and there's my personal one, too, as well. We use Twitter, blogging, and Skype quite a bit in the library at Orchard School. I think I have a student that wants to talk about International Dot Day.
For International Dot Day, we went online with another class around the country for a shared Google drawing. We took turns adding designs to the shared drawing.
Right. And we also, during International Dot Day Week, we Skyped with classes all over the country, and this was a shared dot we did with Barrow School that happens to be in Georgia, the state of Georgia. So, they took turns. One student in Georgia added something, and then someone in Vermont added something. And it's a celebration, it's great to do in September, because Dot Day is a celebration of taking a risk and trying new things, and we do a lot of that. Global Read Aloud.
We read the Fourteenth Goldfish for the Global Read Aloud. We blogged about it with classes around the country, and we also tweeted using the hashtag G R A Goldfish.
Okay. Mystery Skypes.
Before blogging with our collaborative class, we read for Global Read Aloud, we had a mystery Skype. For this, we didn't know where in the US the class was. We had to give yes or no answers to the class and try to figure out where they looked. They were asking us questions, too. We split into groups, answer group, question group, and map group.
Okay, we did a lot of blogging. I don't think I have anyone that is talking about this one. This is the DCF blogs. Hold me up. So, the DCF blogs, we were doing in December, so we're, this is about how we'd use, connect with around the world all through the year. So, the DCF blog, we were doing in December, blogging about any of the 30 different books. We were blogging with students around Vermont. We recently started a DCF Quest Club, and that's with select schools, and our goal is to do an activity based on Mr. Lemoncello's library. I can't tell you what exactly it is yet, because we're still working on the details on that, but they're doing all sorts of activities related to all the DCF books. Mock Caldecott.
During the month of January, the fourth and fifth graders wrote lots of picture books. We had a Mock Caldecott unit where groups evaluated books and added reviews on Padlet, Flipgrid, and Twitter. When we, when we could, we used the author or illustrators to review them. After authors or illustrators, 14 authors or illustrators responded to us. We used the hashtag #MockCaldecott, so others doing this activity would see what we had to say.
So, this shows, I did a screenshot of Flipgrid. So, Flipgrid is a short 90-second video, so they were talking about, they worked in teams, so they're talking about their, the book that they evaluated that day in little 90-second videos. That's just one screenshot. It goes on. Each class has their own Flipgrid. And here's an example of all sorts of use of Twitter to share what kids are doing in our school. So, using the hashtag #MockCaldecott, anyone else doing the Mock Caldecott in the month of January will see what we're doing, so we can connect with them, and they'll see what we're doing. So, in the upper right, you can see Padlet, those two girls are using Padlet to share their evaluations of their books. Underneath, they're using, they're tweeting, so they're using the, they're using Orchard BT, and they're tweeting to Peter Brown about his book, My Teacher is a Monster. And then Flipgrid, that's showing, on the left, it's showing some students using Flipgrid to record their videos, and on the top, they're evaluating their books. And again, here's the students and the authors responding to them. So, again, they're using the handle Orchard BT to make their connections with the authors.
Author Kate Messner came to our school to talk about writing her new book, All the Answers. Everyone was excited to meet her, and she inspired all of us to become better writers. She autographed lots of books for the students to take home.
Every class at Orchard School is Skyping with another, with another class somewhere in the United States. This week for World Read Aloud Week. Our class visited with a class on Long Island about a half hour away from New York City. We read Mr. Tiger Goes Wild.
For the World, for the World Read Aloud Day, our class visited an author, Patricia Newman, who wrote Plastic Ahorn. Before we visited, we came up with questions to ask. It was interesting to talk to a real author.
Perfect. And in just another note, that picture up in the lower with Wolfie the Bunny, I just, the tweet that went with that picture, I was tweeting to Andy Clemmons, who's in the state of Georgia, and I said, you're, it's a preschool class, so we were reading Wolfie, Wolfie the Bunny, and the preschoolers were doing one part of the story that says he's going to eat us all up, and it's repetitive, it says it several times, and that's their only line, he's going to eat us all up, and my fourth graders had all the other parts. So, I said to Andy, I said, your preschoolers did a wonderful job taking Dot's part in Amy Dykman's Wolfie the Bunny for World Read Aloud 15, and I tweeted that picture to Amy and Andy. Amy Dykman, the author, replied, this is adorable, thank you, friends, for including Wolfie in your World Read Aloud 15, and she's got some hearts and smileys. And then, I said back, I wish you could have heard their little dot voices, Amy. Orchard BT fourth graders took other parts, and Amy replied, my family, in all caps, my family's laughing at me because I'm happy crying. So cute. Thanks, friends. So, it's really neat to connect the authors. This is coming up, Home in Your Pocket Days. I was just trying to continue through the year, so we'll connect again through Skype and Twitter with Home in Your Pocket Days. Everyone's sharing a poem.
When we, when we studied national parks, we Skyped with a Yellowstone Park Ranger. We learned about exploding pine cones and all sorts of animals that live in the park. Did you know the park was named after a Yellowstone that was found there?
And there's our Skype with the park ranger. And just empowering young people to have a global voice is so very, very important. I also have connections with publishers. This just happened, so we had, when a book is published, it has a birthday when it's first released to bookstores. So, I connected with a publisher who sent me in brown paper a copy of a book that I couldn't open until Tuesday with a class. I didn't, I didn't share pictures here, but we got a great letter from the author that it's his book's birthday, so so proud that we had it, and we have to send postcards. It's called special delivery. So, we're connected with a class in Michigan, a class in Michigan, we're going to send them postcards with ideas of what they should send through the post office, some bizarre things, because she's trying to send an elephant. So, we have to, different classes are going to send back to Michigan. So, it's just great connecting students beyond the school walls. Any questions for us?
Big round of applause, again.
So, I am curious to know, your mystery Skype, what was the town you ended up connecting with?
They connected, they were blogging with several different schools, so they did have one in California, they had another one in Delaware, but in one, we had two classes in California, she had one, and there was another one that sent us a book from San Francisco, about San Francisco, and we swapped books, and we sent them a book about them.
You know, one of the things that struck me, I think this was in the Master Planning and Visioning Task Force group, although I may be wrong about where this was, but it was applicable there, is we have, when we talk about our community, we typically are talking about South Burlington, but all of you guys, your community is the world, and this work is evidence that your connections are happening not only outside of Vermont and in the US, but outside the US as well. So, I'm excited for you, and I'm really impressed with this work. Great job. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Donna. Hard to move on after that.
It's nice.
Oh, but Rhonda.
Thank you.
Well, on that note, shall we move on to a nutrition services program?
So, yes, let me, again, the board did have some information in your packet. Obviously, we want to kind of walk you through this. I'm going to ask John and Rhonda kind of to do that, and then let you folks ask some questions, but start out with John, and then any, any additional feedback that Rhonda would like to provide, and then open it up for questions. So, John.
Well, first of all, I would take responsibility, you should be getting more regular financial reports, and I said last time that it wasn't Sue Spirit's fault or Rhonda's fault, mine as far as being able to edit there and review before it comes to the board, but we have a different year this year than last year. We have costs that have been actually lower, but sales that are also lower also. And in the expense side, the cost of health insurance and overtime have actually lowered our total salary, our total wages and benefits by 4 percent. On the, on the direct cost, the cost of food has gone up, and it's our fresh food because of weather conditions, and that's just a part of it, and Rhonda will get into more about the composition of what we have to buy. But that's, that's up 4 percent, and you can see, when our sales are down, that's, that makes it go the other way. I believe that Rhonda has done a great job on general supplies, and so that's down 27 percent from the last year at this time. And so, our net income looks like 2013, our net income at this point is $44,000 in the red, but we know that it won't, there'll be some regain of revenues from remaking up school days that we lost in October. There'll be cost containment on the food, which is one thing that we're doing a much better job in the last couple of years than we had before. And so, we're not sure, last year, last year, I had predicted a loss of about $10,000 to $15,000 at this time, and Rhonda was able to get it to $20,000 to the good. So, this year, it's a range of $12,000 to $25,000 that we'd be looking at as far as forecast. On the second page at the top, the number of meals, the significant increase is here at Orchard School, we'll look at the total, but Orchard School breakfasts are up 21 percent, and lunches are up 12 percent. And, I mean, there's been, there's been some change in personnel, and Rhonda will tell you more, maybe Mark even, about why that is, but the high school, we've held our own as far as lunches served, and the trend, the first two months of the year were partial part of August and September, we were up even from the year before, and then in October, we had hit a very low point, so we're making up some lost ground. There are fewer kids at the middle school, and you can see that in an 8 percent loss of lunches served, and the adults, where we had some great gains last year, we've slipped back a little bit. So, that's, that's, that's the financial part of it.
Is there any feedback from adults on why they're not utilizing the service more?
Well, Rhonda and I have talked about it. Maybe you should answer that one, so.
I think before you last year, about the same time, they explained the new regulations that we're going to be facing here. Whole brains are no longer, you know, you have to offer 50 percent, now it's all the time. Everything you offer needs to be a whole brain. And quite honestly, breakfast sales for adults, they don't want a breakfast sandwich on a whole-brain English roll. It's, to be honest with you, I'm surprised we're doing where we're at. I really thought it was going to be a lot worse. We're trying to find alternative ways, different menu items, something, instead of trying to reinvent what we were serving that they loved with a product that they don't love, we're trying to find different products to keep the interest, and that's starting to come around. It's not an easy transition when you're feeding, you know, when you have five schools, and you know, you have, and each school has a different culture. So, it's, it's been a challenge. The whole brains have been a huge challenge for us this year. I'm surprised, you know, we held our own at the high school, but they have 50 more students than they had last year, so really, we haven't, it looks like we've held our own, but we really haven't. Our sales are down now, because they have those extra 50 students from, you know, from here, from, yeah, I keep thinking of the title, from the middle school. So, you know, I think overall, you know, the events in October did hurt us. We lost about 4,500 sales. It's, yeah, 4,500 lunches and 1,200 breakfasts, so if you tack those numbers on, we're really not, it's not as bad as it looks. The sad part is, we had the opportunity, we have the two days, the makeup days, the problem is, is like what I noticed at the middle school, there was almost 100 students out both of those days. So, we're really not going to be able to even come close to try to recover the revenue that we lost as a result of those days, but I think we have time to make adjustments, so that hopefully, we can be as close to breaking even as we possibly can. It's, what else?
So, what's the increase, what's caused the increase at Orchard?
I think staffing. They work really well together, they're very positive, they- They work really well together. They're very positive. They market all the meals. They are more efficient. It's, it's just, it's a really good mix. And we're trying to do that district wide. But sometimes it takes years to, to get that, to get that right mix of people. And then we can again lower our wages. You know, we have a hundred days to replace the positions this year that got done. And so that causes the issue if somebody calls out sick. So I cover a lot of those production hours myself to avoid bringing in substitutes and paying two people for the same day. We can't afford it this year. I mean, basically, we had a great year last year. We were $20,000, you know, in the positive. However, when food costs go up, you know, the medical and dental goes up, I mean, that $20,000, it was already gone before this year started, just in the anticipated increases in wages and, you know, wages and benefits. I mean, everybody gets a raise every year. So pretty much that 20% was gone before we even started the year. So we didn't have that little kind of, you know, cushion built in there. So this year it's been even more of a challenge. And next year it'll continue to be a challenge. Nutritional services departments in all schools are going to continue to struggle and struggle and struggle as a result of the Health and Number for Kids Act. The other thing that you asked me to do in the first meeting was you wanted us to increase the quality of the food that we serve. You wanted fresher stuff. We buried the corn dogs along with the fish, you know, the fish nuggets that were shaped like stars. And we've really brought in good quality food. We use a lot of organic local produce. And we've been able to do it and still stay fairly close. We're getting to a point where we're going to have to make a decision on how we value what we're currently serving. We don't serve chicken nuggets like they serve in Burlington or Essex or Milton. We serve chicken tenders. They're real chicken breast. They're twice the cost of what they serve at a lot of the other districts. Because I believe in serving quality products. We're coming to a point where we're going to have to make a decision, what is the most important thing? Is it important that we're feeding our kids fresh, natural, you know, less chemicals? Or is it important that we break even? And I know that's not a question that we can answer this evening, but it's one that we really need to start looking at going forward. I can tell you that if we cut the salad bars out at every school, we would break even at the end of the year. Do we really want to do that? We've worked so hard to bring that quality to the schools. So, you know, I think, I think we're going to be okay this year. I, I can't promise. Last year I was pretty positive. This year I'm really hopeful. And yeah, I'm going to get us as close as I can if I afford 40, you know, like 40 million hours. But we really need to, as a district, decide what is the most important thing? I mean, we can put food on the plate that will easily make us break even or make us like profit. But are we willing to do that at the cost of nutrition? We've come a long way in the last two years on the quality of the food that we serve. We've got a lot of compliments. It drove everything up. So, you know, we have to really think about that.
So has there been any change in the pricing recently?
Yeah. Let us run from it. Started the year-
No, no, not the cost. Not the cost. The price, the cost.
No, no, no.
We haven't increased that.
Has there been any change in the reimbursement rates?
Fractional, like four cents. It's like four cents this year.
What kind of a percentage would that be? Four cents?
Basically, on a reimbursable meal, if you six cents certain by which we are, we are currently getting $3.12 per reimbursable meal.
So it would have been 308 or something?
Yeah, it was 308 before. And then the other thing is this year, we started this year with $12,000 less in commodity foods that were available from the USDA. They base it on last year's figures. So we started knowing we had to spend at least $12,000 more than we did last year. The good news is, we got it by 20 grand for next year. So, because we had such good numbers. So we're, we're back up where we need to be. We're going to be getting 60, 60,000 instead of just a hair over 40. So that'll help us next year. If we can keep our numbers fairly even this year, then we will continue that pattern. But if you have a real dip in numbers, the commodity dollars, it really hurts you. The other thing is the USDA was, did not do their due diligence. We ordered product. Like I have to order by the middle of March for all of next year what I want from commodities. I have to spend that whole $60,000. Last year I had to spend the whole $40,000. I only got about two-thirds of what I ordered. Most of the product that I had ordered and planned for my menu was not available. They didn't get it. So it's like, okay, great, you know, I get 20 cases of chicken instead of 60 cases of chicken. And I'm not getting any more commodity food for the rest of the year. It's just not available. They, they didn't put out the bid in time. People didn't bid on it. If they did bid on it, prices fluctuated. Pork, beef, they said, why give it to the USDA to give it to the schools and I can sell it for three times more on the regular market? So the USDA really dropped the ball. We had a lot of items that were canceled that we had planned on to use in the menu. So then if you have something that, you know, is heavily, you got that hamburger, you've got to go buy it. And I tried to use the commodity dollars to buy center of the plate items, you know, the meats, the cheeses, the stuff that's really expensive. And, and it backfired last year.
Rhonda, the food buyers group, is that, is that your, is the food buyers group, right?
Food Directors Association?
Food Directors Association. And how is that going? Is that, are they, are you working together on these issues?
Oh, absolutely. We're working together. In fact, we just sat down and spent some time taking the value of the commodity dollars against the value of you would pay at Reinhardt to really help us all understand that, you know, it, it's cheaper to buy it at Reinhardt or it's cheaper to put it here. So you really are getting the best use of your money. And it's a really good tool because the bigger districts have the ability to do that. And then we share it with all the smaller schools. So, because they don't have time to sit there and try to figure this out, whereas we pretty much have that at the push of a button. And, you know, the other thing is, is we spent so much less on food last year that we actually lost a percent of reimbursement. So that drove our food costs up by like almost $4,000 right off of the bat. So we did a lot of positive things last year that put us in a good place and then set us up for failure this year. You know, we spent so much less that we lost a percent. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's always fun.
So Rhonda, on the, on the USDA issue, you, you put an order in basically that used that 40,000.
Yep.
And for whatever reason, only a fraction of that was delivered. So somebody had to have contracted for that. So, and, and we can't have been the only school affected. So where's the follow-up in terms of accountability to a contract?
What the USDA did was they tried to find alternative items that they could offer because, you know, we have like 40 grand. And I put 15,000 into fresh, you know, D Fresh.
Well, are the, are the vendors though being penalized?
That, that I don't know. That's up to the USDA. I have a feeling, this is, this is what I get from Rosie Krueger, who is our USDA rep in Vermont. They had a lot of new people that they hired that didn't really know what they were doing and they dropped the ball and were late on a lot of the stuff. So that, that was the beginning of the ball rolling. They didn't secure those bids when they needed to. So when the market went up, the people are like, why would I sell it to you when I can get three times more? We're not locked in. So they didn't do their due diligence. They did offer us, we were able to get different products, but I don't consider canned peaches or pears a substitute for hamburger at all. We don't serve canned fruit.
Who has the voice to raise the complaints to the USDA or?
The Food Directors Association, the School Nutrition Association of Vermont and pretty much anybody that called Rosie.
And this isn't in Vermont uniquely?
No, they, it affected everybody in the entire country. I mean, they, they just, they would just cancel items. First they started pushing them back. You know, I was expecting to have, I went real heavy on ordering everything to come in in July or the beginning, end of July, beginning of August, so that I had it for the beginning of the school year. And then they kept pushing it back. I don't, I think we got our first order actually in November. By that time, I had already spent about $6,000 on product that I was planning on having in my freezer, that I wasn't planning on spending.
This isn't the first time that this has happened? I mean, there's been, we've also, yeah.
It sure is yet.
Yeah. And that, and it has been in part, some of the rationale and reason for the Food Directors' Buyers Group and some of the advocacy group and there's some voices that are happening. Now, I'm not so sure that we still have enough voices and that may be something that we need to talk about further if this continues, you know?
This just smacks of another one of those things where it asks us to jump a higher hurdle and we don't get any help to do it, even from the bodies that are supposed to be providing the help. So I think it needs to be somehow taken care of.
Well, in some ways, it's almost worse.
It's a bigger issue than, than this district. I mean, we should sort of anticipate, but somebody needs to share. Do we need to get our senators and congressmen involved?
There, there actually is some movement at the, at the national level and that they're, they're actually giving more money to like farm-to-school tech programs, more money to DOD Fresh, which actually, that's where most of our money transferred because I didn't want to bring in product that I didn't feel comfortable using. And we had a couple of products they shipped in that actually were cross-contaminated with peanuts, so we shipped them that. So I put that into the DOD Fresh. So we ended up with over $20,000 in that. And that's for fresh fruit, a lot of it, whatever they can get local. So it's, you know, it's lettuce, tomatoes, cucumbers, carrots, potatoes, you know, that-
I have no doubt that you do, you can't balance things. It sounds like it's really good. The concern I have is you're not getting the help that you ought to get from the organizations that are directing that these things happen. And there are, as I understand it, they're supposed to be there to help these things happen. So I would like to make sure that something is done that calls them on that accountability was used over here, I guess, but, but calls them on that by somebody that they will listen to, right?
Yeah, because, I mean, they sent us an email and they say, oh, it's been canceled. And so it's like you call Rosie and you say, geez, really? Come on, you know, I really needed that. So they are, you know, Rosie is very well aware of it, but we're a pretty, we're a small fish in a really big pond. You know, our entire state doesn't even match some of the districts in California as far as number of students. And I'm like, but we still should have a voice. And that, that's the sad part is, I'm hoping that this year I have to place that order and I'm going to do it in good faith and have a backup. Because we can't, we can't use $60,000 on, you know, fresh fruits and vegetables.
Well, Rhonda, maybe a takeaway from this too, again, I think you're hearing a little bit from the board that, you know, maybe we, we support you in that order, but we also maybe put something, you know, that can go to some of the, either the food buyers or the school nutrition folks or off, off to the government and the USDA to say, you know what, this happened to us, we hope that things are, you know, or whatever you-
Absolutely.
So I think we, you know, we should take some due diligence on our part to make sure we're, we're supporting because this isn't the first time. And not filling the order is sometimes in way even worse than, than the other. Because then, then it's a reactionary step.
Yeah, when you expect you're going to get something.
And then costs are-
You know you're not going to get it, then I think you're in a better position than to be surprised and find out, oops, I got a reaction to this.
Yeah, or you don't know if you're going to get it, when you're going to get it and, you know, so it makes it, what we're trying to do to really make it easier going forward is create a cycle menu so that we can control our costs a lot better. We know every six or eight weeks, we're going to recycle this menu. These are all proven winners. You know, kids like them. They're nutritionally sound. They're fresh. The problem is you can't do a cycle menu if you don't know if you're going to have this stuff. So, so we're, yeah.
I'd say to the, to the other question you asked earlier, Rhonda, and I know you've asked it of this board before, but I guess I would reframe it, but it's really that trade-off of breaking even versus food quality. And, you know, this is not the group of people who has any expertise in that area. So what I would say is, I, you know, we're going to really be looking for your leadership and guidance to kind of recommend what the alternatives will be. It is, nutritional services is an enterprise fund and we're going to continue to look at it that way. So we'll, we'll be supportive for sure.
Oh, absolutely.
But we absolutely need your leadership and recommendations there when it gets to that point.
I mean, I think the students and the teachers and everybody have spoken very highly of what we're doing. You know, we, even this year in January and February, we have a chef trainer onboard with us this year, paid through Conrads Grant. And he's was spending a week in every elementary school. And even though I knew that we were taxed financially, I felt it was responsible to have him here and be doing stuff that the kids had never had before. We did the taste test ahead of time. We did notice some sales drops during those weeks. You know, we throw lentil slaw and joes out of the air and, you know, chicken paella, which we explained a little differently. But they were asking for cultural foods and so we were trying to give them. So we've stopped doing that. We will not be doing that for the rest of the year. And we're trying to really concentrate on bringing those numbers back up where they need to be. I have to tell you that the bus changes have been huge for breakfast. Made a huge impact on, on elementary's and they're, they're continuing to climb. I mean, that, you don't see that, none of these things. Central is our smallest school with the, the smallest number. They've almost tripled their breakfasts since-
So we can link our transportation, our nutritional services programs.
Thank you, Rhonda, for that.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask one other question?
Yes, you can.
Not on the food side, but on the equipment side. There's some comments in here about some aging equipment. How bad is that problem? Do you need some help?
How bad as well?
How bad is that problem, the aging equipment? How, you know, is, is-
The grant that I got last year, I was able to replace some key pieces of equipment. The dishwashers are a major concern right now. Middle school and high school are, the middle, the high school is down. We tried to get it fixed. We, we got the parts. They put one part in. The machine came back up and then they found three other problems. And we stopped. We entertained a bid today. We're looking at the difference between electric and natural gas. We want to be energy efficient. And so I, I think we'll be able to solve those problems and I'm working on grant money. We, I just got a grant this afternoon or the other day from New England Dairy Council. We'll be getting all the milk machines in all of our schools as well as some other equipment. So trying to use outside sources. I think the dishwashers were a really big concern. And the next step is like a couple of ovens. Bart and John and I are going to sit down and make a list. We just didn't have time before the meeting tonight. And we're going to put together a plan.
Look, I just encourage that the two of you get together and coordinate on-
Oh, yep.
On what it is we need in the stewardship plan and how it is we can, and if we've got a problem that we need to deal with, let's, let's find a way to deal with it.
Yeah, we're, we're actually doing that. We're making a list and then we'll determine the need and we'll try to work it within the funds that are available to support, you know, out of, out of the general funds. And we do try to purchase new equipment. You know, the pizza ovens, which have made a huge difference. We were able to get a really good deal and then we're using it. And that's the other thing is we're looking between used and, and new. Some things we don't need to buy brand new. Other things we do. All right? Have I bored you enough tonight?
Thank you. Thanks.
Actually, it's a little better story than you had a year ago. I say as bad as it is, maybe it's not as bad as the ballot book was a year ago.
You know, I really, I really think that we do have an opportunity to turn it around and I think that in a couple of months, we're going to be in a much better place. But when I told you it's a year we could miss by quite a bit.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda item nine, Master Planning Financial Stewardship.
So we have had, and again, the board has been, it's been great to have some of you coming to those meetings. We've had the Master Planning and Visioning meeting. We have another one coming up on the night, which is Monday. I know that for some that may be a little bit problematic. There's also a sporting event going on that night, starting at 8:00, boys hockey, and they're in the championship. So some people may not be able to stay until nine. We may tweak that time a little bit. But the date still stands at not, and on March 9th, that's Monday night. And the big announcement is going to be March 31st. And so I certainly would like, love if board members could put that on your calendar and plan to attend as a, as a community member, a board member to be part of the table group discussions, looking at options that are going to be presented. We think there'll be somewhere around eight or nine options. They're going to be using a, a card system. They call it the big deal. It's a card that will have a kind of a picture or some sort of a description of the option, the school, the option, the configuration, et cetera. On the other side, it'll be the opportunities that we're looking at, both school and, and city. And then a bar on there that will give us some sort of implication on, on taxes. Again- Again, that's, that's our hope right now, so that each, each group would be able to do a fairly quick sort with conversation, guided conversation, also opportunities for folks to offer other opportunities or options in there as well, but to be able to get out of that, you know, a pretty good understanding where the community is. What would follow after that would be the community survey, and then, again, the task force would continue to kind of hone in on where that is, with the end being back-to-school board and council for the shared options.
What time is that meeting?
We haven't said it yet, I would expect that it would be somewhere around the six or six-thirty start time, and it would go for a couple hours, probably.
So, next week's meeting is Monday, even though...
Yep, and we had a conflict with the master planning and visioning Frank Locker, that was the day that needed to be there, so, the night. Again, if you can make it, that's great, it's been nice to have folks in the audience there, listening.
And where's that meeting?
At the city offices, Pat, yeah. So, again, I'm pleased with where they're going, there's been a need to kind of keep pulling it back in with the, with the charge that the board and the council gave them, but a lot of hard work. John's office and Annette Harden have been working really hard, along with city folks, around looking at kind of the cost modeling assumptions, and, you know, I'm pleased with their work as well, around trying to move this along. So, I don't know if there's any particular questions on master planning and visioning from anyone?
Not at this point.
Great.
Great. All right, superintendent's report?
So, as you know, Karen's mom passed away the week, and she was online for having this report, and actually being able to present it to you, some information. I noticed that she had the opportunity, I think, with Julie to give a little bit of an update on kind of where we are with our substitute process, and how we're trying to bring that into, in a better place. Today, actually, the administrators had some training on Aesop, which is the system that Julie had the opportunity to hear a little bit more about, which is really an online system, a management system, and also an accounting system that ties right back into our accounts payable and benefit allocation, so it's a much easier way for us to keep track of the way in which substitutes are being utilized. So, anyway, I'll have her on the agenda the next time, and be able to give you some updates on that. The principal search at Rick Marcot, again, all of you know that Sue Luck, you accepted her retirement resignation from the position. I've currently met with the staff at Rick Marcot, shared with them that there will be a process, and there will be, right now, we've got it slated to have three committees, a selection committee looking at the candidate pool that would come in, looking at an interview committee, and also a forum committee, which would be working with the parents and teachers organization. We're looking for, obviously, teachers, staff, administrators, and a school board rep to be on, to be represented on those, and I'll be back in touch with you specifically about the charge of each of those committees, and the numbers we're looking at for each.
What's your timetable?
Again, it was outlined in the, in the information that I gave you, but typically, we're going to get up into that May timeframe, it's going to be probably the second board meeting in May for, for kind of an end game of an appointment, is our current window right now. Right now, we'll go out on Friday with the advertisement, and we'll have about a two-week response period, and then the, you know, the selection committee will begin looking at, at the options that they have in front of them. So, again, I don't know what questions the folks have regarding that, but I just wanted to make sure you're informed as well as the community.
So, internal candidates have priority, or...
Internal candidates certainly have the opportunity to apply, but again, they will go through the same process that every other candidate will.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, thank you. Next is the elevator update, and John, as we said at the last meeting, we would be providing you with kind of last-minute information, but this was part of it, we said we were going to, we had a meeting that actually John had today, so this is fresh off the press, which is what we said last time, so I'm going to let John just kind of walk you through where we are with this process. John?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to get, I'm not feeling that great, but, sorry. Back in early February, we went through and discussed criteria, the criteria for the construction manager part of this, and the construction manager, to pre-qualify construction managers, qualified people who could manage this project, it's not, it's not who's actually going to do it, that's a separate bid process. So, we, we got that out, we advertised it in pre-press, Doran Whittier contacted people, and we received three replies, and we went through a process, we got these on Friday, and looked at them over the weekend, and met twice, and followed up today on references and that kind of thing. I said we received three proposals, but one, one didn't really meet, it was supposed to be Friday at noon, they came in at 3:30, but we figured, while we had it, we would go through the process anyway, just to see, and it turned out, of a 30-point score, that construction company didn't, didn't pan out, there was a lot of, lot of gaps in there. But the other two companies, DEW Construction and Nagley &amp; Chase, both scored, scored pretty well, and they, that's what, who we would recommend to be given the plans to then come up with the cost for the, for the job. You know, I'm always amazed, we, that we don't get more. It's a $600,000 project, plus the bathrooms will be included in this now, and, but that's not a big project at a lot of these bigger companies, and we require bonding, and it's over two, two work periods. So, these two companies have specialized in doing, one of the, it's a good term, summer burn jobs, I think you burn right through it, you know, it's, so, so the two companies here have good experience with this. And, so, from here, and I have all the notes if you needed to see them, but we went through this quantitative analysis, and then from here, plans would be given to who's approved tonight, and it would be about a month where they would come and prepare bids. We, it kind of looks, we're researching it a little bit further, but it really looks like these two, we'd have to have the bid opening in a public session, either April 6th or April 8th, and we're getting final clarity from the Agency of Education on that. And the only thing I can think of that, if I was a board member, I'd want to know more about the project, and I think if it's acceptable, we would get Doran Whittier in here on the next meeting to explain in detail, because the plans are, are pretty, pretty done, I mean, the construction plans are ready to go to be bid, but the question was, well, can we go forward? Is there, is there a decision point where we've reached the point of no return? We're getting really close when we give the, the plans out to these two companies, but we can, we'll make it clear that, okay, this, the board needs to, it's, the board's the final say.
So, I don't, I don't know if that's an interest of the board, I mean, that's some time, but what I, what we could suggest is maybe there's a couple of board members that might want to meet with, you know, the door Whittier, and be able to go over the, you know, the more intricate details of it, and then kind of just be able to be a little bit of a liaison to us around, again, you understand kind of the scope. We're feeling a little bit like you're not totally informed of the scope of this project, and so, it's big, and there's a reason that it's in two phases, and there's a reason that we're looking for a construction manager. So, I would certainly feel better that you get more informed, but I would hate to burn up, you know, an hour of board time at board meeting only, and maybe there could be a couple of board members that might sit with Doran Whittier, myself, and John, and get an overview of it, and then be able to report back. But, you know, it's really up to you, if, if you're all feeling the need to get a little bit more of an update on this bigger project, because it's likely you're going to get feedback from parents on interruption, you could get community on interruptions for after-school and recreation spaces, you know, you're going to get questions around abatement, maybe, so, so anyway, I don't know what your pleasure would be on that.
Any preferences from board, the board?
Yeah, I think a couple of us sitting down would be good, I'd be happy to eat one of them.
I'm happy to eat one of them, too, not that I know much about that.
Is there, would it make sense, David, if we have a couple of board members that do sit down, that we do an abbreviated presentation at a board meeting as well?
Mm-hmm. I don't see why not, kind of, you could break it down into the smaller chunks of phase one and phase two, you know, and...
I don't, I don't want to be totally redundant, but I think the subcommittee works well to kind of dig in a little bit, but then in a public session, we could do a, maybe a more like a 15, 20-minute overview?
Yep.
That'd be great, I know I'm struggling to give you soundbites, and it needs more than that.
And, and just to clarify, John, again, when this goes out, we, the choice will be between one of these two project management groups?
That's, that's right.
And, and is that when the clock starts ticking?
Um...
On the project?
On the project, yes, yes, it does, when we...
When you accept, when we accept them as a construction manager.
Right, there's a part of it, the abatement of, in different substances, asbestos is most of it, that is going to be the responsibility of the district, working with Cardinal ATC and outside contractors, so that's going to happen. We, June 15th, that, that's all part of it, but the, the general contractor, once that's done, takes over. So, there's two, two parts to that.
Okay, so, I've got Pat and Julie, and we'll set up a time, and then have a, we'll have about a 15-minute kind of recap on an upcoming board meeting, which we need to remember, okay?
But we do need some board action tonight to see if we want to go ahead with these two companies.
Well, we didn't warrant any action. Where would that be?
It's, you know, we can amend this agenda and put action to just move this forward, we need to mail them out, there's no financial commitment on the onset, but to get the process going, so, we should...
Just, you know, why, just clarify, why does that need board action? It's the equivalent of an RFP, right?
It is, it's, yes, it is.
Do you think...
It's because it's over half a million dollars, there's more, more stringent rules that we talked about, Bob Fletcher gave us some opinion on how to, how to go about it. We, there's no state money involved, so, and these bidding rules over half a million dollars...
If we're not authorizing them to spend the money, then I don't think it's an action.
Okay, you're not authorizing to spend money.
Right, you're entering into, sending out the RFP with the understanding that you're working to get a construction manager, you're going to make a decision and an action item in the future around a decision.
And part of the, just one last thing, part of the funding is coming from the operating budget from, it just passed yesterday, so it's, that was a good hurdle to overcome.
It was a good hurdle.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. John, you're good, go.
Okay.
You don't feel well, you go.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
Wasn't sure you were...
Anyway, initiate...
We'll tell you, we'll tell you later what you said during that time.
And what we signed you up for.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we will move on to agenda item number 13.
Yes.
2.10.
Yeah, and that is in your packet, and you received that. Thank you, Mark, good to see you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
So, I believe Martin and Elizabeth and maybe Dan had some feedback for this, I was not part of this, this small subgroup along with Stuart, but I know that there was some feedback that was provided.
Once again, you're excluding me from this.
Oh, yeah, no, I said Martin, did I? I said Martin, Elizabeth.
Oh...
Yes, I did!
I had a feeling left over.
And Dan also weighed in, I think, through email a little bit.
He did.
That's right.
All right, so, anyway, I don't, I think maybe it'd be best that if there's questions specific, you can take it from here, Martin and Elizabeth, and Dan and Stuart, and I can respond if you need...
Yeah, I guess, I can jump in. We had a quite a long and productive and good meeting, I think, and a lot of the discussion actually went into talking about ends and ends monitoring, which is not really what this particular policy is about, though it's kind of caught up in it. And I think towards the end, where we circled around to was back to looking at the policy, and really, that has to do with curriculum, although obviously, curriculum needs to, in fact, in the policy, it says it has to be guided in part by the board's ends policy, so that does, does play a role. But I guess, you know, I, I'd like to kind of talk a little bit about the policy, and then talk a little bit about what our discussion was on the ends monitoring, because I think there was some important things that we need to have out on the table and have everybody weigh in on. But as far as the policy itself, it boiled down, is there needs to be a curriculum that is following certain standards, and that curriculum has to be periodically looked at and updated. And, and I felt that, you know, this gave a lot of detail about, in fact, how that is happening. The one thing that, I wasn't completely positive at the end, and let me, I have to look at the earlier draft, did you say that it was policy compliance or not compliance?
Compliance.
No, I mean, in the draft, the earlier draft?
I didn't say anything.
You didn't say anything, okay.
I waited until this.
Right, right, until afterwards. Because, yeah, we didn't talk about that bit, because the one thing I was not, and I'm not entirely sure from the, the report, is whether, in fact, we do have the current curriculum in place for, for all the various areas, academic areas that we need to have in place. I don't think this, unless I missed it here, it doesn't specifically say that, I mean, and if that is the case, yeah, I don't disagree that we're in compliance, because a lot of stuff is being done to update the curriculum, and I understand that, but what, what's the base? Do we already have a curriculum that covers everything?
Yeah, that's what's, that's two websites that are, other websites in the district that are cited in First Evidence, K-12, so, the 5K, K-5 curriculum that we found out, and the 612, yes. All right, so, H-2. Go to...
And I guess the one, I would still have a question outstanding on that, and I know that we didn't get into this deeply when we talked, but I'll just use it as an example. The end that, I mean, the end that we have our students learn how to, I should look at it to make sure I'm saying the right thing, time management skills, one of our ends has to do with time management skills, I'm just going to use that as an example. And, and I don't think there is any curriculum for executive function or time management skills, and I guess the question would be whether that is one of the areas of instruction. So, how do we define the areas of instruction to make sure that we have all the areas covered that we need to have covered? And again, this is going, I'm pretty satisfied, except there, I'm pretty satisfied with where the work is going, particularly when you're talking about the transferable skills, which does get to a lot of our other ends. I don't think, from what I understand, that there's a curriculum for transferable skills right now, so if that's also an area of instruction, then, then we really don't have a curriculum existing at this point, and this may be a technical point, but I would say that we're not in compliance right now, because we don't have a curriculum that covers everything we need, although we are doing all the work that we need to get there.
So, I, I think it's easy for us to get in kind of the, we're not there yet bucket, but where we are, I mean, when I look at, you know, the policy and my interpretation, we have many moving buckets right now.
Right.
And so, we do have written curricula, we do have, we are meeting, I believe, the requirements that are set out by the agency. Where I think we're, we're trending is that we're trying to get ourselves in a place where we're ready in 2016 and 2017 for these requirements that are going to become... for these requirements that are going to become embedded in, in what I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to respond to you. You know, because in two thousand and seventeen, we have an obligation for P L Ps, for instance, right? We have all of these kind of gates along the way and I'm not really, I'm not really sure, I mean, that's right back to the policy. I'm gonna, if I don't do those, I'm going to be non-compliant. So it's, it's time and place.
I think, I think what Martin's saying though is we, we know that progress is being made. But if you look at, you know, the, uh, the definition here, it's. With that written curricula aligned with Vermont standards and board ends policy. So we know there are not some written curricula that are aligned with some of the ends policies. So we know we're headed there, but do we just, it, it's not like a black mark. It's just acknowledging. We're not compliant until we do that. And I know, based on our conversation with Stuart, we know there's some alignment work going on. Around those ends that are ultimately going to align with proficiency-based graduation requirements. That fall largely into the personal development area. I think that's our, our biggest gap where there's sort of not written curricula right now.
Got you.
Is that, is that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly right. We just, we didn't have anything, whether it was compliance or not compliance, we didn't talk about it. And the, the point is that right now, we don't have all the written curriculum.
That's specific to the ends.
To cover the ends. And, and that moves to the next part of the discussion is, is as far as what is being planned to, to get there. Uh, it's just that I didn't want, by saying, you know, compliance, that is suggesting that we're saying that, you know, we have everything right now. We don't. It's not a big deal. I just think it's not, it's not compliant, but I think I agree with where, where you guys are going. As far as, as far as to get there. And, and that's, you know, that's the more important part of this in my view, anyway. So turning to that, there, the one, I think, big point that I want to throw out there that we talked a little bit about. Is that the way that, one of the documents really highlights this where, I guess it's, maybe it's the science document, but. Let me find where it is. No, it's attachment five, the Vermont proficiency, graduation profici, proficiencies crosswalk of transferable skills. And, and part of the discussion, and, and we'll see if Stuart and Elizabeth and I remember it the same way. Was that there seems to be a lot of effort that we've asked for to really directly align our ends to. Every part of the curriculum and make sure that the teachers are looking at our ends when they are thinking about what they're teaching. And when they're in their classroom and when they're grading, et cetera, et cetera. But right now, what's happening on the ground in the schools is, uh, being driven much more from the. Education quality standards and the common core and the language and concepts that are included there. And that, that's what's listed here with, in the proficiency standards, Vermont proficiency, clear and effective communication. And there's a whole range of those. And that's, that's kind of becoming, kind of like, I guess we could say grassroots. Is the language that teachers are really looking at, getting excited about, et cetera. So what I threw out there as, as a possibility was, well, let's, let the administrators and the teachers and everybody focus on that. Since there is wind in the sails of, of the Vermont proficiency standards. We keep on trying to wedge the ends in there and make them look at it as opposed to, you know, from top down, I guess. And at the end of the day, if we are measuring those properly, most of those do crosswalk really nicely into our ends.
Correct.
And it's, at the end of the day, when you're doing the monitoring, that the administration that will, will show that we're meeting our ends. By meeting these particular Vermont proficiencies. Now, that's kind of the step. And the reason why I suggest it is, is I don't want to wait for that baseline anymore. And this would seem to be the most efficient way to get to a baseline of how we are doing. Because the transferable skills, which a lot of these, which is a lot of what is being measured in the Vermont proficiencies. And I might be getting E Q S Vermont proficiency and all those things mixed up. But all those, I mean, really do crosswalk. So, but the second part of it, I think, is as well. Is there are some of our ends that are not reflected, I don't think are easily. Transferred to that. And one of them would be time management, or I could call it executive function curriculum. And I know there's such a thing that exists. Um, you know, that may be one of them. But I think that rather than trying to continue to force everybody to walk exactly by what our ends say. As long as these Vermont proficiencies, which people are using, are pushing to use, uh, gives us a proxy for how we're doing. You know, that's kind of what I was, I was suggesting when, when Elizabeth and Stuart and I met. I don't know if Elizabeth completely bought into what I was suggesting, but, you know, that's the purpose of discussion.
Well, and, and I will give you, it's not so much a converse view, except that I feel. I owe it to the community and, and this board and, and our predecessors to offer this view, which is. The board went out and actively solicited feedback from the community on what ends would be valued. So the ends that exist today are a direct reflection of the community values, which over time. Were, were aligned with, um, some of the, like the S B six. So there was alignment that happened kind of at the building at an administrative level to incorporate work that had been done. Largely with the N I S C certification that went on at the high school several years back. So if I can give a little bit of a historical perspective, the board sort of moved into policy governance. Focused on ends development, tapped into community input and community included staff as well. There was a period of time where concurrently, the N I S C certification was going at the high school. And as part of that process, the high school, um, was guided by the certification to develop some. The equivalent of ends at that level, which became the S B five and six, correct Stuart?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, you're getting a layman, you're getting a layman's version of this.
That's good.
So.
That came out of the D I S word.
Yes. So, so that was developed and there was a lot of buy-in, at least at that level, for the S B six. The ends got developed and kind of overlaid at that time. And I think all of this board kind of remembers with maybe exception of Patrick, that there was a little bit of a period of time where there was. A lot of stutter step going on around, is it ends? Is it S B six? And, and the end seemed to always get tacked on of, at the end of, oh, and by the way, here's what we're doing on S B six. And here's where, and, and here's where it fits the ends. Um, so then on top of that, now we have another. State initiatives, a series of state initiatives that are coming in long after the original community feedback on ends. And we just came to an internal reconciliation on ends that marries up all our facilities and, and our entire administrative team. And now we've got state stuff coming in on proficiency-based graduation requirements, education quality standards. And Martin is talking about this crosswalk. And, you know, my pushback is, I don't know if we were ahead of our time on ends six years or five years ago. But it does feel like, you know, I, I don't disagree with Martin's assessment that maybe we should sort of, you know. Go with the wind and the sails approach and, uh, and focus on where we can get a baseline that there, there is some, um, energy around. Within the district. I will say, you know, speaking on behalf of the community that participated in ends five years ago and the board that worked very, very hard to develop that. It, it just feels like, um, there's been a lot of resistance to the ends. And it, it's kind of a shame that we haven't found ourselves in a position to potentially have been driving Vermont proficiencies. Because we, we were ahead of the game. So.
I guess, I guess I would just, I, I'm not suggesting we're in any way jettisoning these ends that we want. I'm looking to try to find the most efficient way to get to a baseline.
A baseline, yeah.
And, and if it were that we could force the ends upon this whole system, that would be great. But I don't see that to be the best path to get to that point, particularly since so many of these Vermont proficiencies. Are mirrored really with just somewhat different language and maybe in two or three of our sub-ends. You know, they're mostly there.
Yeah.
You know, uh, there's only a couple, I think, that, that, that we need to add.
So let me, sorry, let me, let me, so again, I, I, you did a nice job actually giving a nice little summary of that.
Well, and I, and Stuart educated me and reminded me of some things that were going on in, in parallel. But kind of created a, you know, some collateral impact that we didn't anticipate at the time.
So just a, a nice job with that. I, I think, um, first of all, I don't think you should be totally surprised that the transferable skills. That you came out are totally misaligned with some of the work that we're doing in South Burlington. We're very, we've, we've been active in the high school and we've been very active with a lot of the conversations that are going on around how to move education forward. Now, I don't want to say that you, we can take all the credit, but certainly we've been active and administratives have been active around talking about how to move things forward. And certainly there's, there's no coincidence there. I think that, you know, I, what I hear is there's always a worry. This year it's transferable skills. Three years later, there'll be something else that might come along. And I think you're worried, what I'm hearing you say is, okay, David, well, we take our ends and we mosh them into, into the transferable skills. And then next thing comes along and have we eroded our objective and ends? And so I'm thinking that we don't let go of those ends, and I know Martin's not saying that. That may be the overarching umbrella over it. And underneath that are the transferable skills that work to that. And we've basically done the crosswalk here where they work, but, and where they don't work, we're working to make sure that we can have the, the skills. And, and the, and the curriculum that makes that work. But we're going to be, I think that's the way we don't ever lose sight of the ends. And in this particular phase, transferable skills actually match up nicely. Now, if something else comes along again that doesn't match up, then I think we've got to say, you know what? We're going to use this data. We're going to have to come up with some of our own local assessments or additional assessments and additional, additional curricula to make that work. But my, my thinking is you don't lose sight of the ends. You, yet the crosswalk is right. You work to the transferable skills. We collect assessment data specific to that. That allows us to continue to inform you on how we're doing in particular to this work.
So I just want to say a couple of things. One is, there's never going to be a transferable skills curriculum. The transferable skills will be embedded in the proficiencies that are content-based, just like the ends need to be.
But the proficiencies are going to be measured. That was, that was one thing that Stuart showed us was actual, there are some rubrics set forth that are measuring. These transferable skills. I've never seen that for our ends.
For all the transferable skills, that would be statewide. But the other piece I want to, you know, so this science draft, uh, attachment four. Uh, which is one of, we have one for every core area at the high school. And eventually, I mean, we're still working on those proficiencies because you, the board has to approve those final proficiencies for graduation in two thousand and twenty. Which means next fall, because the class of two thousand and twenty will be eighth graders and they're going to need to know in January. What it means to graduate from South Burlington. You'll notice, for example, that the first one, you know, is South Burlington ends one point one one. Or, you know, demonstrating independent thought, curiosity and creativity in the hypothesis question. You know, so we, we're doing that same crosswalk, not just with the transferable skills, but with the ends in our embedded proficiency. So that when we are doing this work, we're doing it all in one piece. So that's part of the discussion going on in all the departments at the high school. So it's not like we're ignoring that. What the piece will be is of course to say, okay, so is. One, one five someplace. When we're done, where is it missing? Because we then need to look and say, so right now, we're doing an inventory, um, which I think I took out of the evidence because we're not there yet. But, you know, we're doing an inventory for each one of the indicators. So we're looking to where students use presented information models graph. We look at earth science and we look at biology and we look at everything. And where is it introduced? Where is it, um, practiced? Where is it mastered? So that we'll know where the summative assessments go. Um, we'll be doing that scientific crosswalk across the whole piece. And then we'll be able to say, which we've never really been able to say, you know, where are the ends missing? Where are they being introduced? Where are they being practiced? Where are they being mastered? So I think that this is the road to get there. Um, the reason I believe that we're in compliance is that we're on that road to get there. Which is really, you know, I mean, I guess you could say we're never in compliance until it's totally there. And if that's the report, that's fine, you know, um, but curriculum is a process. I mean, it's always going to be moving in some ways or another.
Yeah, and so I, I'm, you know, again, I, I hear what you're saying, Stuart, and, you know, from the board's perspective, you know, part of it is the interpret, you know, the policy that's in front of you is. As Martin said, you know, specific to the ends. And when you look at it, there are gaps. And so I get that. And, um, I don't, I don't want us to get all worked up about whether it's compliance or not. It's more about, are we moving in the right direction? Do we have a compliance plan? You know, that's what I'm required to make sure that you're, you're aware of.
Well, so I didn't write a compliance plan, so if it says I'm compliant, I will have to write it. I don't want.
Well, I, it seems that the compliance plan is largely there from what you're saying is happening. So I don't, I mean, I don't think a compliance plan is a whole new plan from what you've laid out.
No, I think you just have to change the format. But, yeah.
Yeah, so for, I mean, from my perspective, I, and, and I, I did let Stuart know I would probably bring this up, so no surprise. It really, kind of an effort to honor the work that was done by the community many years ago. And to anticipate, you know, that we, we don't want to, um, override the ends with sort of the, the, a potential program of the month. And, and just marry it up. But I do agree with Martin that, um, a measurable result is important. And there is, um, there is a lot of positive momentum going on in the district around the proficiency work. So, um, it, it was an excellent meeting and, and I would just offer to the rest of the board that I think both Martin and I walked away feeling. We're headed in the right direction. Gap identification is a big deal. Kind of continuing to keep ends at the, as the umbrella. And even the way things are presented by starting with the ends versus starting with proficiency and then documenting, you know. The, the kind of ends as a, as a, oh, by the way, this is where the ends fit in. So the orientation is, is in the right direction from that standpoint. I don't know if there are other questions from other board members?
I like, I like the tenor of what's going on in terms of that, but I think the document needs to reflect that. There is a recognition that a gap analysis has to happen. And we need to have some kind of idea of how that's, how we're going to get to that point. Okay.
Well, I think in the, in the policy governance, then there needs to be a, a plan of, a compliance.
Yeah, you need to.
Process that needs to delineate that a little bit.
You just need to recognize that's what this is.
Sounds reasonable.
Any other comments or questions?
I do like some tabulation of what's going on here. I mean, it's really very convincing that a lot of good stuff is going on. But the reality is, we do have to, we do have to, we do have set ideals that we want to get to. And we may never be satisfied.
Yeah, I think.
But we want to strive for that.
The, the other analogy that was helpful to me is it's, it's hard to talk about two point one oh without migrating right to ends. And what was helpful to me was, um, curriculum and development review is your roadmap. The ends is the destination. The destination will constantly change. And frankly, how you get there will and should change over time. But it was helpful in review of this particular monitoring report for me to distinguish the, um, the roadmap from the destination.
So we can, I mean, we actually, we can bring this back with a compliance plan. Maybe the best, instead of you going through that and, and scoring it now, we will work on a compliance plan and bring it back. We, I don't think you'll need to take a huge amount of time at that, at that point. You can just really go right to the compliance plan and see if that works.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Stuart.
Thanks. Uh, we'll move on to set the agenda for the March eighteenth meeting.
Yes.
Before we start that, um, Ben, I promised Alina that I would bring up that we need to discuss whether people are actually going to be.
Yeah, so I, I have that on mine too.
Okay. Okay.
So, thank you.
She thought there might be some apps.
Oh, you know what? I'm gonna get her. Yeah, geez. All these checkers. Meg, too. It's all good, but checkers. So, March 18th, I am out of town. And I believe Elizabeth is out of town as well.
Dan's out of town, right?
No, Dan's not out of town. So, what I, what I'd like to propose.
Like delayed leaving to be here for the 18th.
Yeah, so what I'd like to propose is that you keep the meeting on and we would, we would put items on here, Stuart would be here, John would be here, and we may, that may be where we do the elevator. We can do the compliance.
I mean, we can do all the easy stuff while you're not.
No, no, they're not.
No, last time Elizabeth was gone, I had 300 people here.
Exactly.
So, we need to put something like closing the school on the, on the agenda before, because otherwise.
There you go.
It'd be really a letdown for me.
Yeah. Say the fifth year is one of yours.
I've got, you can just stay up, same school.
So, that, that would.
It'd be a big ticket, I think.
That would be my, so that would be my recommendation. Those would be, and we, we can look at this agenda further, but certainly schools out could stay on here. What we just talked about on 2.10 can stay on here.
I'd put that with the following.
Yep, we can move that.
We can take out your report, you're not gonna be here.
Well, yeah, we, we, that's true. We can take that out. So, anyway, I, we'll come up with the agenda and we'll make that right for, for obviously myself and Elizabeth not being around.
So, I'll be back in an hour.
Well, that's, that's not fair.
Well, I can't, I can't promise that because Martin will be here.
Sure, it's true. Never mind. I'll take care of it.
True shit. So, anyway, that, I, I suggest we keep it on, but know that, that we're gonna be, you know, both Elizabeth and I down. Right? Thanks. And we'll work on that agenda and make it balanced.
All right, so can I suggest certainly that we don't need to have the executive session either? So, I'd take that.
Yep. Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right, good. Shall we shift to future agenda items? One of the recommendations I was gonna suggest, because it's pretty typical when we reconfigure the board, that we schedule a retreat. And it might be appropriate to cover some of this information.
You know, they give, they give me smiles because that wasn't the thing, I was, had on my list, but.
You do know, you do know that all your.
So, do you get charged that way, too?
Totally.
Sorry, I left it, too.
So, I guess I'd look to the, the board, is there an interest in kind of scheduling a little bit of an extended session that we would put a number of topics and we, and we, actually, there were a host of, Dan's done some good analytical work that I thought might be appropriate for the retreat as well.
But just so you know, you know, retreat is kind of a misnomer. It's really extended for.
Or a work session. We've called it a work session.
It's more charging than retreating.
The idea, I think, that we were thinking about is maybe sometime in April.
Yeah.
It could be an, an evening, you know, just devoted work session evening, where, you know, again, we've, in the past, we've also done a Saturday, kind of, you know, a nine to one or something like that, if you wanted to do that as well. I know that gets a little bit more complicated, but I don't know what your pleasure is around that.
Yeah, is, would everybody be open for a, maybe a three-hour evening meeting to kind of move some agenda items off and get caught up on a variety of activities? But maybe leave the time open if, if there's an opportunity. If we, I know we have an RFP going out for legal services, the, the, this meeting might be one where we would be getting some feedback or presentations from legal teams.
It really is a work session. I mean, I don't want, in some ways, we probably should do, I'd like to do some, a little bit more future planning, a little bit with you around our MTSS work and where we're going and, you know, make sure everybody's aware, but then also about where the board wants to go, ends discussion, some of it with legal services and contracts and things of that nature where we can kind of look at that from a more, you know, global perspective, so.
So, perhaps we could ask that Delina or Meg look at a date in the April timeframe and then we can start to kind of populate what an agenda might look like. And I, I wouldn't rule out, based on the community meeting the end of March, that there might be some master planning and visioning discussions that would occur at the board level at that meeting as well. If, if anybody has ideas, other board members that you want to get on to for consideration for this work session, I'd, I'd use the next meeting or two to get those on.
So, does that work for people? The April, is there times or weeks to stay away from?
April break would be a good one to stay away from.
Stay away from, yep, that's good.
If we can do it on a Monday, that would be.
Monday would be better, all right.
Things get hairy for me.
Gotcha. That's good. Any other potential problems in April?
No.
Okay, well, we'll send out some, some dates. Thank you.
All right. Consider the meeting minutes of February 18th. Any modifications or changes?
I did have one modification. In the second page, the bottom of the second page, it says the addition of the late start days at the high school, middle school will be reviewed and evaluated before they are considered for the 2016, 2015 year. I would add a sentence before then that goes along the lines of this, and you guys can tell me if I missed this or not, but I would put something along the lines of the board noted their concern over having 16 late start dates and stated that this change should be for one year only for the purpose of transitioning to the common core PLPs and PBDR.
We'll bring it to you.
If everybody agrees that that's in fact what happened, I would give.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely right.
All right, with that change, I will consider, by consensus, the minutes of the February 18th meeting approved. There were a couple of responses on AP orders 30 and 31 that John provided, I believe. Any additional questions on those?
Yeah, so can I just ask, they were my questions. Can I just ask a, an additional question about the second one, which is the, the omitted, it looks like you lost track of one of these payments or something on, on this truck?
Or it was overpaid. It looks like it might have been overpaid.
Or engine repair. I don't really understand, but the, the, the basic question for me is, this is a huge bill for a repair. And, I mean, is that an in-line bill? And should we be considering when we're having repair bills of that magnitude, replacement instead of repair? Because I don't, it just seems.
I don't know. I have to, I'd have to look more into it for you. I, I don't know, well, I was, I would be just guessing at.
Okay, that's fine.
That's a fair follow-up for us to look at that. We don't typically have those high costs based on the, the fleet of our buses.
Right.
But I don't necessarily know that either. So, let me find out more for you, Julie.
Great.
So, we'll have a follow-up on that item then.
Yep.
All right, and we kind of missed announcements earlier.
Yeah.
So, do you want to cover that before we?
Sure.
See if the board can be looking at the self-evaluation while David does announcements.
So, right here, Orchard School Fair is March 11th, 6:30 to 7:30, Science Fair. It's a great opportunity in the gym. You get to see a lot of the kind of maker spaces going on. There's some really neat things that are happening. And I would say it's a big collaboration between home and school around some of the science-related experimentation. So, great if you can make it. The 17th, we have a packed dialogue night at the high school, March 17th that is, March 24th, another neighborhood learning, community conversation and dinner. April 9th, Tuttle at the, packed at FHTMS. May 13th, packed, thank you. So, these are all packed events. And then congratulations to the middle school eighth grade, Sean Carlson, who qualified for the Vermont State GOB, great, great accomplishment there. And he'll be competing on March 27th at Middlebury College. I already told you in an earlier place around the March 9th, the Boyts Aki final will be happening. And that's the same night as the master planning and visioning, so we may change that a tad, but I don't know we'll be able to do much. There was a first meeting today for the airport planning committee. And there's, again, I'm gaining more information about how this is gonna work, but there's a steering committee group, which I went to, and I also had Carst in there as well. And then there's going to be a public advisory committee. Carson's gonna be your representation, representative at that. Those are gonna start, probably the first meeting in March, in April. But remember, the home takeover program is gonna start, or the demolition part program is gonna start on the 17th of April and it's gonna go through September. And so, I'm, I was very vocal around making sure we get this committee moving first. Otherwise, I think there's gonna be, like, the committee's gonna get tagged with taking down, you know, homes when it really isn't associated. So, they'll need to get moving a little bit quicker, so. And Carson's gonna keep me informed and you informed of the, of what's going on with that public advisory committee and their work. And then kind of the oversight group is, is, and I'll be going to those meetings. So, again, a lot of the same thing on the master planning, you know, what's the charge? What's the focus? What's, you know, all of those things are needing to be defined for this group. But you need to know that there's going to be pretty considerable conversation and disruption going there. And there was, well represented by Burlington, the airport, consultants that have been hired, the city folks that were there. So, anyway, it was informative, since letting you know that. And then the last thing is just a little quick update on buses. We, again, you know, we made changes on buses to drop off. You heard Rhonda talk a little bit about, you know, uptick as a, as a, as a result of that, I suppose, around a couple buses being able to get here earlier. But we, we're struggling right now with bus, bus drivers. We're short bus drivers. We are actively working and you've even seen the sign, our, our high school sign has bus drivers wanted. We're really going out aggressive to try to see if we can get some folks to come and, come and drive.
How's it working with Kelly Services?
Kelly Services is going fine, but again, that's not gonna be an immediate response to get drivers, because even if they come on, there's a training period, there's licensing, all of that. So, they're, they're doing what they're, you know, been contracted to do, but that's not fixing our issues right now. So, we, we do, we have some, you know, upset moms and dads and guardians around the transportation. I just want you to be aware of that. We've done some things around splitting routes and where we can keep them split for efficiency purpose, we're doing that. But then, of course, on top of that, we have other, other situations that happen where somebody then is unable to come in. And we've also had, as a result of some of the, just, you know, you know, driving unfortunate situations, we did have, and I sent to the, the board, actually, Elizabeth called me and said, David, I think there's a little something going on on Dorset Street, which there was.
I'm a full-service board member.
Yeah, yeah. Which there was. There was a small little fender bender that happened. Actually, some of you were with me when you said hi to Pat Banner the other night. But that threw us way off, too. So, we were, we have some students that have been coming in late and were working. Today was a much better day and we're hoping, you know, that tomorrow we'll be, we'll be back on track, but I just want to make you aware of that.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, it doesn't seem like we've had issues hiring bus drivers in the past. Is there something going on that people aren't available?
There's a state line shortage.
There is. I, I mean, I could speculate, there's a certain, you know, definitely the drivers are individuals that are typically kind of second career or post-career. And it's similar to what probably is going on in other areas, but we've got a population that's aging out of that. And I think that's in part in play what's going on across the state. Then, you know, they're just not, they're moving out. They're, they're just not driving anymore, so, or, or there's other situations going on. So, that's a, it's a, it's a delicate population right now and we're working hard to think about, you know, could we have morning drivers? And then, then, then have other obligate, opportunities within the district and then have a PM driver and, and, you know, something like that, where it's hard sometimes for our younger, younger population to do a morning only and then do an afternoon and it's, doesn't really give them a lot of flexibility in the middle of the day. So, we're, we're looking at that. And we did have the consultant who's come in. I'm waiting for her report. She gave me kind of a, you know, face-to-face summary with a lot of good suggestions, some of what I just shared with you. And again, she's, I think it's gonna be really helpful around how we can think about moving our, our services forward. Not been a problem in the past. And again, we think we're a really good employer. We pay people appropriately and we have good benefits, so we're, we're a little bit perplexed.
And one quick one I didn't see, but I was over at Chamberlain today. I think they have their anniversary celebration on Friday morning.
Oh, yes, thanks. Friday morning, eight o'clock, yes, come. I'll be saying a few words. We have quite a few folks that are coming to, to say a few things. Will be a fairly short event and we'd love to have anyone there, board members, if you're there, I'll, I'll try to recognize you and, for a few minutes as we're there. But again, really just welcome, they're turning 50.
That's like 8:20 in the morning?
Yes. I'm not exactly sure on the time. Elizabeth, Delina or Meg, we can send you the, the exact time that that starts. Won't be right at eight, because kids are getting there. Well, we hope they're getting there at eight. So, anyway.
David, I'll take a big up situation, it may be unique to me, but I didn't get this package till Tuesday morning.
Yeah, we have something going on with the mail.
Mine was late.
I know.
So, we, we have something going on with the mail and I, I don't know, I mean, again, hats off to Meg and Delina, we're, they're very concrete sequential. We haven't changed anything. I don't know what's happening.
But one of the things I know is on Monday, I sometimes don't get mail till late at 9:00 PM.
Yeah. So, the other thing, so with that in line, you know, we're, I'll work to get the laptops to you. And that may, in fact, if you're, if you become comfortable with what you have on there, then we can talk about.
Yeah, I just, I've gotten used to getting them on Saturdays, so I don't spend a whole lot of time looking at the ones that get.
Yeah. So, anyway.
But also usually some lead ads, so.
And, and we'll have to talk about, once that happens, you know, to get one more paper cycle and see how it went, electronic only. And, and we can go from there. All right?
Okay.
Thanks for letting me know, reminding me.
No problem. Martin, you wanna go through the evaluation?
Yes, we did, we had for the school board meeting, all agrees. We had a couple of comments. Stu's presentation was great. Ends at Orchard, keep them happening. We need, what does that word?
Action.
We need action to question accountability of government support. And Rhonda is a, is a real asset, asset? Is that gonna sound? I'm getting a little punchy, I'm tired. The acoustics in this room are difficult, as you could just tell.
Yeah, I, I will.
It'd really be bad when we were straight in line, I couldn't hear anything.
Right.
I didn't know who was talking.
So, I, again.
It's a little bad.
That's in my court, because I, I have told you that I, I need to come up with, for the, when we go offsite to different locations, I gotta come up with a different miking. And obviously, you know, I asked our ATN and they were, they were gracious enough to look into it, but it's not something that they could run through this system to do it. So, I need to come up with an add-on microphone, perhaps similar to what the city does, but something I can transport around. I really don't want to have.
Part of it is, at least for me, I'm not usually hard of hearing, but I can't see[1717.12]